Good evening. Today is Wednesday, June 30th, 2021. I hereby call to order this special meeting of the Madera City Council at 6 o'clock. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Roth and Brown Act. The city council meeting will be livestreamed on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 949-6327-9573. Hashtag followed by star nine on your phone to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Horse Street, Madera, California, 93637. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Viegas.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caigos is absent. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
And Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Would you all please rise and join us on the evocation led by Councilwoman Anita Evans?
Precious Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for waking us up and bringing us here again today. Thank you for the fellowship that we're about to partake in, Father. Allow each one of us, Father, to make the decisions that will pertain to you and not of self, Father God. Continue to watch over us and keep us, and bless the mayor, bless the city officials, and continue to watch over all of us. And I thank you, Father God, in your son's precious name, Christ Jesus, amen.
Thank you. Would you all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Gary Kunt?
Ready, salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, and just as fore.
Thank you, Gary. Good thinking, Anita. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Alicia, do you have a late distribution announcement?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, members of the public are advised that less than 72 hours prior to this evening's meeting, Item A2 was distributed to the council after the agenda packet was finalized. Members of the public wishing to view or obtain a copy of this item may do so by visiting the City of Madera meeting and agenda page located on the city's website.
Thank you very much. I will ask my colleagues, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Seri Hyner, hey, none. I will ask for a motion from my colleagues.
Want to approve the agenda as presented?
I second it.
Motion to approve the agenda with the late addition by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Evans. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Caigos is absent. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Final vote is 5-0. Motion passes.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comment. Members of the public shall have an opportunity to address the city council regarding matters on the agenda. At the time the agenda item is called, speakers will also be limited to their comments to three minutes. As a reminder, the comments, the public comments tonight will be regarding the Item A, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item A1. I believe Mr. Sanchez, or would you like to start, Arnoldo?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I will be starting the presentation this evening, and about halfway through, I'm going to hand it all off over to Roger, if that's okay? So with that, I'll be sharing my screen, Mayor.
Okay.
Just bear with me for a second here. I believe council can see my screen this evening?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So the item before you this evening is the preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022. This evening, staff is not requesting that council take action on the proposed budget, on the preliminary budget. Rather, what we would like to do is council, about two, two hours ago or something like that, received a hard copy at your doorstep. It's a voluminous document. It's north of 640 pages. It is a very dense document. It's not light reading. And we didn't think it would be appropriate to dump it on council's doorstep and said, "Good luck." Rather, what we want to do is highlight some of the key items through the budget. And at the same time, if council has any questions or if they'd like us to focus on any item or two, we would be more than happy to do that. The only action we are requesting of council this evening is to adopt a continuing resolution for the existing budget. California law states that local jurisdictions have to have adopted budgets beginning July the 1st. However, there is a provision in the law that allows local jurisdictions to continue with their existing budget until the new budget is adopted. Unfortunately, we fell a little bit behind because there's a lot of moving parts, which we're going to dive into in a few minutes. And thus, the need for the continuing resolution. However, the document before you, again, it does contain a lot of information. And the purpose of this evening is to kind of walk you through it. And again, it's, I wouldn't say the 30,000-foot level, but we're going to get into some of the weeds this evening. For way of background, council may recall that we have come to council on multiple occasions over the past couple of months to discuss budget-related items. Council may recall that at the last meeting, I said, "We didn't want to give it to you in one false swoop." Rather, what we were attempting to do is provide different aspects or different sections of the budget in bite sizes. So as the saying goes, what's the best way to eat an elephant? Well, one bite at a time, and that's what we're attempting to do. And so going back, back to April the 21st, council may recall that you received a CAFRA. That's the Consolidated Annual Financial Report. Council may also recall that during that meeting, staff indicated that we had an allocated fund balance account in the city's general fund of roughly $6 million. The CAFRA actually indicated 7.4, but subsequent to that meeting, we came back and we allocated $1.4 million of the said 7.4. So today, we have approximately $6 million of unallocated general fund dollars. That's not the reserve. The city still meets the minimum reserve balance as established by the council back in 2015. So this is above and beyond the reserve. May the 5th, we came back to council where we identified the retail taxes that the city receives and some of the projections for going into next year. Those projections are not prepared by staff. Rather, the city contracts with HDL, and NHL provides that information to the city. And HDL provides both sales taxes, which is commonly referred to as the Bradley Burns Tax, and then also for Measure K revenue. So the revenues in the document you receive this evening, those two figures were obtained through our consultant, HDL. On May the 19th, we discussed revenue projections for the enterprise funds, and that has to do with sewer and water. We came back on the following evening, council may recall, it was a Thursday night, and we discussed a capital improvement plan, the CIP. And then we came back on June the 2nd, and we talked about operating expenses, the M&amp;O in the city. On June the 16th, we came back and we discussed labor cost. And tonight, we're putting it all together in a very thick document for the preliminary budget overview. And again, if staff's recommendation this evening is going to be to adopt the resolution, and then we'll come back at a subsequent meeting for formal action on the budget. So some of this is redundant information, but again, it's a very thick document. And we want to be sure that both the council and the community have a comfort level with what we're presenting. And there could be community members that are watching this for the first time, and they don't have the benefit of watching the previous council meetings. So some of this is repeat information from what I just said, with the exception of the fourth bullet point. Since staff provided council the document two hours ago, we did find a handful of minor, what I would call typographical layers that we'll be making some adjustments on. They do not impact the dollar amounts, or rather, the more graphical in nature. For example, there are probably places where we misplaced a photo, or we had a line that covered something. So again, they're typographical layers. There's nothing substantive that we've identified. And so again, hence the phrase "minor." So for the benefit of the council, and really, just as a reminder, more than anything, the city operates on a fiscal budget, not on an annual budget, I mean, on a calendar budget. And so the city of Madera's budget runs from July the 1st through June the 30th. Much of the city's discretionary revenue comes in the form of sales tax. The city receives a lot of other revenue, but, as you know, those are part of the enterprise funds for sewer and water or for specific services. The discretionary funds are with council. Those are the funds that council has the greatest discretion in terms of identifying the use for. One of the challenges with sales tax funds is that sales tax revenue is not known for several months until after it's received. So for example, the quarter we're in right now actually ends tonight. The information for the past three months will not be known until around September or October. So again, so everything we're basing our budget on is we're attempting to forecast how much revenue we're going to have, and we're attempting to forecast it before we have it. And that's always somewhat of a challenge, but we try our best to get the best numbers. And then subsequent to this budget, in a couple of months, we'll be coming back to council with a financial audit. And the city of Madera does do the most exhaustive audit, commonly referred to as a CAFRA. That, in terms of government financing, that's the most exhaustive type of audit the city can do. Prior to, I believe that the last two have both been CAFRAs. Prior to that, the city was not doing CAFRAs. The city was doing what's referred to as a single audit. And I believe they did a single audit for about five or six years prior to that. But again, we are doing a very expensive audit, which is included in the budget this evening. So there are a couple of account types. There's the general fund, which is sales tax and Measure K. There are enterprise funds, which I didn't list all of them, but a couple of good examples are the sewer fund and the water fund. One thing to note is that enterprise funds cannot be transferred to the general fund. So for example, we cannot take money from the water sewer fund to pay the firefighters or to pay the police department. However, the council always has the discretion of taking general funds and allocating that to enterprise funds. Internal funds are included in the budget. An example of internal funds is fleet, whereas the fleet department of the city, which is comprised of six mechanics and a supervisor, they provide services to city departments. So for example, our fleet department services are city buses, our police vehicles, our public works vehicles, our street sweepers, et cetera. We have special revenue funds, which is a good example. That's the gas tax. And then we have capital projects. Examples of those include sidewalks and roads. And some of this language is, you'll find pepper throughout the document, and that's why it's important to try not necessarily become an expert, but have a good understanding of what some of the terminology means. So to begin the budget process overview, one key thing is to always know is, does the city have a balanced budget? So I'm proud to announce that the city does have a balanced budget for next year. And for the past two years, so this would be the third consecutive year, we have presented a balanced budget. Prior to this year and the two years, so the previous five years to that, the city had what was referred to as a negative budget, where projected revenues were not expected to cover projected expenses. Again, the budget before you this evening, projected revenues are expected to cover projected expenses. Not only that, if the city meets all of its projected revenues, we would have a surplus of $278,000. So again, it is considered a balanced budget. Even though at the end of the day, we would have more money for budgeting purposes, it's balanced. One thing, too, is that the proposed budget maintains a current level of service, and it does identify some deferred maintenance. And I probably took great liberty with the phrase "some." It's a drop in the bucket. The city of Madera has a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance. However, as I've told this council before, the journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step, and we're attempting to identify some of those items as part of this budget. It's a drop in the bucket. We need a lot more. But the budget does continue its commitment to maintaining critical CIP infrastructure, sewer and water. And one thing you'll always know is that this budget, just like any other government budget, is based on projected revenues and expenses. It's easier for the city to attempt to quantify expenses, but revenues are always a little bit more challenging because if a store closes or opens in Madera, the city receives a sales tax benefit. So oftentimes, we're relying on the local economy to do well. So a couple of things about this budget that were a little bit challenging. Forecasting during the pandemic. We're still in a global pandemic, even though the governor recently lifted a lot of the guidelines beginning June the 15th. A couple of key things to know is that revenues were projected to decrease during the pandemic. However, with online sales, the city of Madera actually experienced an increase. The online sales was the direct result of state guidelines that changed through office and a Supreme Court case coming out of the city of Boise, Idaho, which greatly benefited the local governments because now we actually receive some of the sales tax benefits of online purchasing. People are driving less, but the cost of fuel has increased. So what that means is it's both a good and a bad for the city. It's bad because it's going to cost us additional money to pump our own fuel. And then also, at the same time, the city is receiving less money, less sales tax for fuel. Business travel has decreased, and it's unknown at this time if it's going to revert back to its pre-pandemic days because of technology. We've become very accustomed to Zoom, and we're not confident that business travel will return. Leisure travel will more than likely return. However, business travel is left to be seen. Program recreation activity revenue has decreased. For example, there are less sports programs today than there were a year ago. Actually, probably not a year ago. They're coming back right now. However, it's been challenging to forecast that. And at the same time, there's been lots of unknowns for the past year. So we did curtail some of our hiring. However, as we're getting out of the pandemic, this budget proposes some additional positions be added to better serve the community. Council has seen some of these numbers, but this is just a brief summary. So here are some key assumptions on some of the revenue. So retail and sales tax is projected to come in for the next fiscal year at $10.2 million. And again, these are numbers that obtained through HDL. Measure K is 5.6. The hotel tax is $808,000. The hotel tax under the budget that we're operating right now was less than $500,000. But again, we're assuming that that travel will return to pre-pandemic levels with the exception of business class. So we attempted to increase it, but at the same time, we had a temporary expectations. The property tax in lieu is 6.3. Property tax, an increase of 2.4. In the current budget, it's at 3.7. So we're projecting a roughly $600,000 increase in property taxes. Business license revenue relatively flat by $474,000. Cable franchise fee of 309, which is a slight increase, as is the electric franchise fee of 383. The last two both increased roughly $15,000 or $20,000 a piece. Some other key assumptions. Healthcare costs have increased for the city of Madera. And we've also included one-time payments as part of labor negotiations. Council may recall that we did have the $6 million surplus. So both of those expenses are going to be accounted for as part of the unallocated general fund. The vacant positions that we currently have on the books, we did not budget those at 100% for the entire year because the fiscal year technically begins tomorrow. Rather, what we attempted to do is budget those based on assumptions of when we were going to hire the staff person. So if we believe we can hire the staff person by September, we did not budget that position at 100%, rather, we budgeted at 75% for the fiscal year. Healthcare for vacant position was budgeted at employee-only. This is different than a couple of years ago when the city was budgeting for the employee plus the family. And what we've come to realize is that if we budget at the employee, the numbers work out, and that's a probably more appropriate way of budgeting versus an entire family. Cost of living increase adjustments for staff have been incorporated into the budget as well. And one other thing that we noticed is our energy costs are going down. However, we also have to pay debt service on the loan for the program itself. So the city is projecting a decrease in our energy cost for the upcoming year. Some other expenses or some other challenges. Our unfunded accrued pension liability is projected to increase by 10.1% or $448,000. That's our unfunded pension liability. That's not the total amount. That's the addition to what we're already paying. So that's an enormous increase. Again, you may recall from one of Roger's previous presentations, for the past six years, on average, it's gone up 11.2% per year. This year, it's projected to increase at 10.1%. The property liability insurance is projected to increase over 26% or $389,000. And then going back to the previous slide, employee health insurance is going to increase approximately $580,000. One, another big item that we're still working through the details is Senate Bill 1383, which is scheduled to go into effect on January the 1st of 2022, has mandatory recycling guidelines for the state of California. And if they go into effect, which right now they're scheduled to, it's expected that the cost to, or trash pickup could increase between 30 and 40%. And that's across the board of the entire state of California. I know right now, there are a lot of local communities that have written to their state legislators or the governor asking to postpone that or to implement it in phases. And that includes the city of Madera. We did recently submit a letter requesting that they reconsider the implementation of this program overnight. It's not that it's not needed, but those would be large increases for our community members. And again, overall, the city of Madera's labor costs are projected to increase next fiscal year. This budget, again, does include some very minor deferred maintenance items that we're attempting to address. Again, any number that I say right now is going to seem like a drop in the bucket because candidly, it is. However, again, we're attempting to beautify our community. So we do have in this budget $45,000 for three new vehicle lifts for our fleet division. In the two past fiscal years, we've upgraded one lifting each year. So we have two newer lifts in the city. Rather than wait, we thought for safety purposes, it's better to purchase three lifts at once. At that point, we would have five brand-new lifts in the city, and those are used daily by our fleet and by our mechanics. The budget includes $20,000 for tree maintenance and tree replacement. The city does currently allocate $120,000, which it gets from our franchisee, for solid waste franchisee, to clear the branches over the roadways. This $20,000 would go to tree replacement within the public right-of-way or for tree replacement. Again, this is to beautify the city. This past year, council may recall, we came to you during the mid-year and we requested $10,000 for palm tree maintenance, and council approved it. The prior year, we spent $20,000 on the removal of mistletoe. Actually, I believe it was $40,000. We have a lot of mistletoe in our community, and we're trying to address it. Mistletoe, it's in a lot of songs, and people like it, but it's a disease that kills your trees. And so it's not good for tree canopies. Until this year, we are proposing $20,000. We are proposing $50,000 for improvements. These are capital improvements at Towny Country Park. Towny Country Park needs significantly more, but these are for some relatively minor improvements. We're proposing $55,000 for Rotary Park. This is a park on Gateway. $25,000 for Sunrise, which I still refer to as Milvium. We also have a grant that we received for $28,000 for Chachancy. And what we would like to do is combine those two for roughly $50,000 and install a new Taula. The Taula has been purchased. It was purchased a number of years ago by the city, but it was never installed for the lack of funds. We would like to install that over at Sunrise Rotary. And it's right, it's in between, it's on the south side of the soccer fields there. If you go out there, there's already a place that's fenced off for its location. We have $150,000 for alley maintenance. This is for repavement and just general maintenance of our alleyways. And then we've included $15,000 for crowbaiting. I understand crowbaiting is not deferred maintenance, but I didn't really have another good spot to put it. But so that's where I ended it. Addressing future needs. So this is one of the things that we're trying to, we're attempting to address existing needs, but at the same time, we want to make sure we're setting ourselves up for the future to make sure that we're looking after future generations. So these are some things that are included in this budget as well. $150,000 for state mandate housing element. The housing element has to be completed every eight years. This is a state law. If a local jurisdiction does not do it, the state threatens potential grant funding. And we would source this out because, again, the state guidelines on housing change every six months. It seems like they're changing, and there's additional reporting requirement. So we've allocated $150,000. We would do a request for proposals, and so it could come back a little bit lower. It may come back a little bit higher, but that's some ballpark figures. We are also proposing $200,000 for the fire engine replacement fund. Council may recall, we started this fund a number of years ago, about three years ago. So as of today, we have $600,000 in the account. By the end of this next fiscal year, we would have $800,000. Fire engines are extremely expensive, as we all know. And it's easier to start socking away money in the bank early rather than trying to come up with $800,000 at once. We've identified $260,000 for Measure K, $130,000 from police, $130,000 from the fire department for Measure K stabilization fund. That account, by the end of next year, will have $910,000. That fund is being patterned after the city's general reserve policy of 30%. So we've slowly been building it up at $130,000 from police and $130,000 for fire. The goal of this fund is if, in case there's a dramatic downturn in the local economy or there's an emergency, we have some funds set aside to address those immediately. So again, this is, we patterned it. We started it about two and a half years ago. The same thing with the fire engine replacement program. We started that two years ago, and we've slowly been building up the account. We've also, as council is very well aware, we have a tremendous amount of work coming into current planning and into engineering for new construction in the city. As council is aware, if you drive around, there's a lot of new development happening. We have $165,000 programmed for planning and engineering consultants. That's not to say we're going to use it all, but it's easier to have the money in the bank rather than trying to scramble at the 11th hour trying to find it. And we have a lot of work right now. And then also programmed, we have $185,000 for an ADA consultant for city facilities programs. And right-of-way, this is for the sidewalks. So one thing that you'll notice is that HR budget, the human resource budget, looks a lot... looks a lot bigger than it typically is. Well, that money is allocated from that department. So in terms of new, um in terms of new positions um being requested of this budget, we have a senior engineer, we have a part time senior engineer. Um we have a part time administrative assistant in engineering, and again, those three positions are all in direct response to an increased workload and the amount of projects coming into the city. A community development director, which has been vacant for approximately two, a little over two years now, two years and two months. An accounting tech too in finance department to to respond to the community. As as council is aware, during the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh we have a lot of community members that have not been able to pay their utility bills. And oftentimes, what that leads to is increased costs for service or uh very long conver uh phone conversations. And and we do have a need for for additional capacity. A neighborhood preservation spec or supervisor, that's uh, that's another way of saying code enforcement officer. Uh our code enforcement division right now is running relatively lean. Uh we know we have to address some needs there. Uh the previous supervisor did retire and due to budget, we we at the time, we did not propose to fill it. And now we're asking to add it back into the budget. A school resource officer, which would be uh stationed, well, it would be stationed at at the headquarters, but they would specifically be for Matilda Torres High School. This police officer position will be paid for by Madera Unified School District. A wastewater treatment supervisor, uh as council may recall, uh the wastewater treatment plant does not have a supervisor. And um for succession planning, we think it's best to identify a hierarchy that that establishes a supervisor uh for again for succession planning. An administrative analyst in the police department. The police department currently does not have an admin analyst and um so one of my goals has been to establish an admin analyst in every department that would be tasked with the budget, the recruitment process for um and for um other executive duties in the department. We're also proposing six part time maintenance workers. These part time maintenance workers would be capped at one thousand hours for the fiscal year. And the idea, as council is aware, we we started a while back a safe and clean initiative throughout the city. And s- some of the things that we've been focused on, we started with shopping carts, abandoned shopping carts in the city. Then we moved to snipe signs. Uh the best example of a snipe sign are the we buy house ha- signs where the signs that get left over on 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 power poles that quite frankly uh get repeated or they break off and they start flying in the community and they become litter. Uh then we moved over to abandoned payphone booths. We removed uh around fifty payphone booths in our community. Shoes over power lines. If you drive around our community, it's pretty rare that you see shoes over power lines. We've done all of those things with existing resources, which has put a strain on our community. However, um we we crunch numbers and we think it would be appropriate to add six part time pa- uh six part time positions as a pilot program to address some of these needs that we see in our community. There are a lot of areas in our community that we look at, we say, boy, that that place doesn't look very good, has overgrown weeds, because oftentimes it, I I usually refer to it as no man's land. It's kind of, it's kind of along the railroad lines. There there's, there's, there's a, there's pockets in our community that need some attention. And and these six individuals would be in their streets, but they would, it would solely be to clean up the community. And then we also have temporary transfers still because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. We have four transfers in our community or an organization that that over the next couple of months, they'll transfer back to their home department, primarily in the parks department, um as things begin to open up. And so those aren't necessarily new positions, but but I think they're worth discussing with council. So overall, uh FTE, so full time equivalent, we have two hundred and ninety three um FTEs. That's not necessarily an employee because sometimes you can have, so for example, the six part time employees. Those six part time employees would be three FTEs, not six FTEs because they're part time. Um so so this budget projects two hundred and eighty three. Uh the general fund would pay for two hundred and eleven. The enterprise fund is roughly sixty two. Special revenue is three point five, internal services is fifteen point eight five. If you compare this to last year's budget, it's an increase. Uh last year's budget was two hundred and seventy five. If you look at the budget year prior to that, it was three hundred and eleven. So it's more than last year, but but that was intentional because of COVID, but it's still less than what we had two years ago. And some of this has to do with right sizing the organization and making sure that um that the organization is very strategic in terms of where we're hiring and how we're allocating our finite resources. Uh speaking of right sizing, one thing that we've been um really stressing to the organization is right sizing our fleet. Um there there is equipment that the city does not own, but but at the same time, there there's equipment that we own that rather than having one piece of equipment, we may have two or three pieces of equipment where maybe one is okay. And so one thing that we've been stressing and we've been talking about this as an organization is sharing equipment between different departments and different divisions. And we've been doing that. We've uh council may recall, I think the last council meeting or two council meetings ago, um we we were gonna sell a surplus par of property, and oftentimes this is vehicles where it's costing the city more to maintain the vehicle versus buying a vehicle, and so we're so, we are surplusing that. But at the same time, the city has a vehicle replacement program where every year departments pay a little bit into a fund uh for the vehicles in the program, and then when it's time to get a new vehicle, there's funds in the account. Very similar to the fire engine replacement program, it's the same exact concept. So this year, we are proposing that we replace roughly a million dollars in 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 equipment. This includes two patrol uh two patrol cars at a cost of roughly a hundred and thirty thousand. Um a police caravan for twenty eight, a Tahoe and a Charger for the police department at a hundred thousand, three motorcycles at a hundred and five, and airport flail mower, and that's the pull mowers behind at at fifteen thousand roughly. A landscape trailer for our parks department at twelve, various mowers that that are in need of replacement at for the parks department at sixty one. A six inch sewer pump for the for the sewer division at fifty five. A sewer jet rotor vacuum truck, this is obviously a very expensive piece of equipment at four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Um the, these pieces of equipment are not cheap, but they're needed. And these, this is the equipment that when you have clogs in your sewer lines or for leaves, this is the equipment that goes in and cleans it up. And then we also were in need of a tractor at the wastewater treatment plant. Every item on this list isn't, i- it's in the the vehicle replacement program. So there are funds available because the funds have been building up for a number of years. So there's funds available for these uh items. However, we're also requesting to add some additional equipment to the city's fleet that we're in need of. Uh two new patrol vehicles. One of the vehicles we need because we have a new police officer, I'm I'm at Tolda Torres High School. Right now, we don't have excess cars. And then we're also asking to have uh another new vehicle. Oftentimes what happens is when vehicles, when police vehicles are are in uh, there are accidents or something happens, we find ourselves sometimes scrambling for for an extra police vehicle. Um a bu- a facilities bucket truck, on the picture of the right is a bucket truck, that's our electrician uh. I believe that's Phil. Um and I'm sorry, Pat, that's Pat Rollins, I believe. That's, no, it could be, uh, don't. And so anyways, and so that's the bucket truck that we currently have. So the bucket truck that we have, it's dated, it's starting to give us problems, so we are proposing to buy a new bucket truck, and this is what we use to clean or to repair street lights, signal lights. But the other thing council may recall is as part of the NG project, we purchased a hundred and fifty solar streetlights. Those those lights NG is not going to service in terms of cleaning the solar panels, we're we're in charge of that. Every, all the other solar panels in the city NG is responsible for, with the exception of the hundred and fifty sto- uh solar streetlights. So unlike the other equipment I talked about about right sizing our fleet, and as we're buying, we're selling the older equipment, the existing bucket truck, even though it's giving us some challenges, we still want it as a reserve specifically for the NG project, and it allows us to do a little bit more tree trimming in our parks. And then uh and then we have a fire command vehicle that we're in need of for eighty five thousand dollars. The command vehicle itself is not that expensive. What happens, it's all the equipment that goes in the vehicle. The equipment that goes into the vehicle is roughly the same price of the vehicle itself. It, so the costly part there is the equipment, n- not necessarily the uh in the vehicle. We also have some um some other items that are grant funded. This is for our transit, so two new transit uh vans. I understand that the photo of the right a a bus, but these would be vans for our transit. That's at two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and again, that is grant funded. And then a server for the transit center, which would also be grant funded at roughly nineteen thousand dollars. So those would be new capital assets. And then also included in the budget, and this may be a little bit premature. Uh this is not to box the council in, but at the last council meeting for CDBG, coun- council did preliminary identify potentially half a million dollars for sidewalk repair. Um and this is not for new sidewalks, this is for the re- uh for the repair of existing sidewalks to our community, that's budgeted. And then the other item that we added in public works is historically, we would have emergency funds in various accounts. One thing we're attempting to do a little bit different this year, we're creating one contingency account of seventy five thousand dollars. Um which would be spread out through a couple of different end departments. The challenge with seventy five thousand dollar for an emergency, it's probably not, well, I'm not gonna say it's not enough, it all depends on the size of the emergency. If if it's a water leak on Howard, we can probably fix that for fifty thousand dollars. If it's a an enormous problem, then obviously, um we would probably have to come back to council, where we would have to use our emergency account. The good thing is, we do have emergency reserves set up for uh for those types of items. But when you're putting them into an annual budget, it makes it a little bit difficult because you're almost, you're attempting to anticipate an emergency. Because we know that's always challenging. Uh so with that, uh mayor and council members, I'm I'm gonna switch it over to Roger, who's gonna get into some more of the details in terms of the uh the labor cost. But those are some of the big items that I felt was probably very important to highlight, so when you're going through your six hundred page document and you're seeing what's what's, you know, what are the key pieces of information, we attempted to capture that uh through these handful of slides, and I know Roger will start going through some, through some of the labor cost.
Thank you, uh city manager. This is Roger Sanchez, finance director, so at this time I'd like to share my screen with you and uh provide some uh information. So this is part two of the uh budget uh information. So I wanted to give you an overview of the of the revenues uh of the general fund. Uh on this section, you can see the historical perspective of uh taxes and which is the biggest component. We also have license and permits, fines, charges for services, and other general fund revenues. And you can see the total revenues, uh you can see that it's been uh growing uh overall. Um this is um a significant component of managing the city because as you can see, there are significant increases in cost for the pension, health insurance, uh labor costs, all those components, so it's 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 kind of important to to cap that, we do have these revenues in place. The general fund taxes is this, the biggest uh component uh in in the general fund, in the form of revenue. So you can see the history of property taxes and property taxing rule of vehicle license fee, the sales tax, uh measure K, hotel tax, and the total. As you can see, this is general fund taxes. Again, eh there's been increases. If you notice on the sales taxes, you can see there's a significant increase. You notice on sales taxes from eighteen nineteen compared to this, uh where we stand, um projected is signif- significant increases, which again, it helps manage the increases of operating cost. Um also on the uh measure K as well, that's um, uh we can see there's gonna be um healthy in the upcoming year, at least according to the consultants. So I'd like to give you some uh uh information on um operating expenses by each department. I don't think I have taken the time to give you a good picture of uh each department. And you can see um the history, uh you can see the labor cost, uh contract for services and other MNOs for the total um cost of operations. So this is the city clerk and city council, as you can see. Uh this is for the city manager, similar piece of information, again, labor and um uh contract and other MNOs. Uh the the city attorney, to clarify, this is not just one uh service, this is all encompassing. City uh attorney services, that includes uh water lit- litigation and other uh other components, uh special counsel and 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 so you can see the labor cost used to be in the past, and now it's more shifted on the contract for services. The human resources and risk management. I don't know if uh actually, the city manager already mentioned some of the details as to why the increases on the contracts for services related to the ADA, and yeah, by all means, if you have questions, Wendy can provide some more details into that. In the finance department, uh as you can see, um of course, we have the COLA and things uh that have taken place and the additional request. Uh police operations is the biggest expense um compared to other departments. Fire operations, and you can see the increase is mainly due to the uh new fire station. Public works, and this is related to the general fund expenditures. It does not cover the uh the enterprise funds, this is just for the uh general fund portion of public works, including streets. Uh planning department, um some of the increases in the contract services is due to just um increase workload and increased projects that are pending and that need to be um um dealt with, uh so just a lot of growth in 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 those projects. Uh building department, um you can see um a little bit of an increase on the labor cost because of uh the hiring that is gonna take place. Um but overall, it's steady. Engineering department, again, there's significant, significant projects that are pending and um uh on the CAP side. The on the grants department, there's a change on the accounting, on how we do the accounting. It's the same uh very similar expenses as in the history. However, we're uh asked by the HUD representatives that we have to code a labor cost directly into transit and into other uh grants activity as opposed to doing transfers. So this changes more uh the form of accounting, but we do still have the the expenses related to grants, the same people. Parks department, uh we can see uh the activity, uh there's probably gonna be some savings here uh during the twenty twenty one because of the activity, the law activity during the pandemic. Uh but overall, we you can see the budget is is ramping up. Hopefully, things will be better for for the upcoming year. So the in the general fund overview, we do have uh in for the twenty twenty one projected revenues at forty two point six million with a proposed expenditures of forty three point three million with a net operating budget. However, as the council has allowed um the management team to go ahead and not to utilize, to use, excuse me, unallocated fund reserves. There's a health insurance component and the one time payout for uh the bargaining unit, so we do expect a net surplus of two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, uh so far that's our our estimate. Now, there's significant uh opportunities and challenges that are coming, that are coming. Uh for one, uh we have a pending uh measure R. Uh we also have a study for development impact fees that is pending. We also have a rate study. And along with this complexity with the rate study, we we do have um the American Rescue Plan, which could potentially uh have an impact on 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 the city and depending on what council's direction is. So soon, we're gonna bring to council the information uh on the rescue plan and possibly um a public hearing on that as well. Uh so the city um is expected to receive twenty three million dollars, about twenty three million. The city has already received eleven The city has already received eleven-point-five million dollars in cash. Uh, and so, um, this management team needs to come back to council and, and, and discuss these items in more detail. Uh, we also have, um, a, uh, master tax sharing agreement with the county that is pending. So a lot of projects that are, that are coming. One thing that I was, all this has uncertainty in terms of how much we will collect on the enterprise funds because of, of, depending on how the American Rescue Plan money is used at council direction. Um, but one thing that, uh, we're seeing the numbers for the current year, and we do expect to receive, to have a surplus, um, based on, um, the, um, the revenues from sales taxes that is, has been better than expected, and also some savings on labor costs as well. So with that, um, that's all I have. As you have, uh.
So, so Mayor, if I may just summarize a couple of things, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of key takeaways are, are, the budget itself is projecting a surplus of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, Roger just showed the overall revenues. One thing we're noticing is our revenues are, are expected to, to, uh, to increase versus previous years, even prior to pre-COVID dollars. Um, so, so we are projecting higher revenues. At the same time, we're projecting hi- higher expenses. There are some one-time expenses as well that, that can ever, uh, can the staff is proposing. For example, we have the housing element, which is new to the city, hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We're projecting to use general fund dollars, which again, I understand council historically probably has not done that for the improvement of, of some of our parks. Again, it's a drop in the bucket. It's not gonna be enough, but it's a starting point for some of our parks. Um, and there are a couple of other items that we're attempting to address with, with general fund dollars. And so the reason we have a comfort level doing that is we know that the city has, has a healthy reserve. We have some unassigned funds, and everything we can tell is development, private development is extremely busy. Now granted, private development can always fall off, but, but, but in terms of staffing, we have a comfort level because we are using consultants for some of that as well. Um, and so, um, and so one of the challenges when you're looking at expenses, um, s- some of our revenues are projected to increase as well. So for example, kind of like we talked about, some of our police department, um, their expenses are gonna go up, but that's gonna be offset by grants, and it's gonna be offset by, by, uh, by some of the, uh, some of the revenue from Madera Unified School District for three officers, the Housing Authority for an officer. So again, increases in expenses, but it's gonna, some of that will be offset by some new revenues. And on top of that, like Roger said, um, measure R is not taken into account in this budget because it's, uh, it's too unknown. We have the American Rescue Plan, which will be coming back to council for, for discussion, and some direction from council about what we should do with the money. Um, currently, we, we, we've received eleven-point-five million dollars, as Roger indicated. We have the tax sharing agreement that's ongoing, and we have two enormous studies happening at the same time. And when I started this, um, in my presentation this evening, I, I said, one of the reasons we're running a little bit late on the budget is, is primarily those two studies. We have the development impact fee study, and we have the rate study, which, which has taken a tremendous amount of staff resources to complete, and that just put us a little bit behind. And then on top of that, we had the, uh, the transition from the old software system to the new software system, and the new software system is one-hundred percent implemented, and we've done all of that in, in the past couple of months. So with that, Mayor, um, if it's okay, I'll turn it back over to you for discussion and for direction from council. And again, the only item that staff is requesting that council take action on, on, um, can this evening would be to adopt the continuing resolution, not for the new budget, but for the existing budget that we're currently operating, um, until the new budget, until council takes action on the new budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnaldo, and thank you, Rogelio, for the report. I just have a question for Chief, uh, Chief Watson. Is that eighty-five grand for a F-150 electric truck?
Uh, no. Uh, that, that's for a, a three-quarter ton or one-ton pickup. And, and like, uh, the city manager explained, ha- half of the, uh, cost of the vehicles for the, is for the radios and lights. The radios is probably the, one of the motor, more expensive items.
Nice, nice. Well, I was hoping to see you driving around in that, so, so I can give you a ride or something. I don't see any comments from my colleagues unless Mr. Montez has something.
Right on time for me, huh, Mr. Mayor?
There you go.
Yeah, so my question had to do with, uh, staffing levels and some of the contracted services. So, um, and I understand that, you know, if we have a, um, a lot of projects coming in, but we don't anticipate them to be, we don't anticipate that increase to be indefinite. At one po- at what point do we actually hire more staff rather than continue to contract?
So we, we're attempting to, to, to hire more staff now, so we have some additional bodies. And so the goal is to ramp up staff, to rely, and to rely less on consultants. One of the challenges that we're having with some of the professional staff in planning and engineering specifically, and in the building department, finding, finding individuals to apply has been somewhat of a challenge for us. And so, um, the more full-time staff that we can hire, our reliance on consultants will decrease, and that's the plan long-term. And so, um, and so again, the only reason why we're relying on consulting staff is i- it's the process of hiring new staff, and it's not just the process, it's, it's finding qualified staff has been somewhat of a challenge. As council's aware, we have three new planners here in the city, one, uh, Gary Conti being the planning manager. Gary's entire team is, is new to the city of Magara. And on the engineering side, we've, we've been very fortunate. We hired a very qualified, um, senior engineer recently. He started. We, um, we're, we're in the process of hiring, uh, a part-time professional engineer who retired from another jurisdiction, who's, who's decided to come join us on a part-time basis, and then also some assistants. But, but can the goal is to hire full-time employees and not be so reliant on, on, on consulting? With the exception of, for example, the housing element. The housing element's only completed every eight years, and I think it, it's in the city's best interest to hire a consultant because it's completed every eight years, rather than trying to have staff become subject matter experts on that. But again, can the goal is to, to move towards full-time staff on that. And if I may, uh, elaborate a little bit, uh, council, the other thing that we attempted to do, for example, in the park staff, um, we have a few less, uh, FTEs identified in the parks department, um, because some of the funding that the city historically relied upon, it's, it's, it's a little questionable right now. So in the past, we would have automatically budgeted, assuming we were gonna get that funding. In this particular fiscal year, because of COVID-nineteen, we're, we're not certain that we're gonna receive some of it. So at some point, if we do receive the funding, we'll come back to staff, we'll amend the budget, and we'll add the revenues and the additional FTEs. And so if the numbers look a little bit low this year on, on some of those from, say, two years ago, that's why, because we took a slightly different approach when it came to some of the, uh, park staff. Thank you.
Uh, Jose, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this question, uh, for you, Arnaldo, maybe, uh, Roger can answer, but, um, the budget that was delivered to us and the numbers that you presented, Roger, was that, were there some discrepancies in the, uh, operating fund, um, expenditures by department? Because I noticed that the, the, uh, the handbook that was, uh, given to us and which you presented differed a bit. There was several discrepancies on that. So I ju- I wasn't sure if that was who you were talking about earlier, Arnaldo? That there were still some.
If, if I may, Councilmember Rodriguez, uh, one thing, uh, that I focus on the expenditures by department is on the MNO and the labor, whereas the budget book includes all expenses, which includes the special payments, debt payments, and other, um, other, uh, expenses. So, uh, I just wanted to focus on what, what is the operations, you know, how does it look on a, you know, on a daily, weekly basis? What is the trend, things like that? So it, it, that's the reason why it, it would be different.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Roger. And, and my last question would be, um, when, when looking at the, uh, general operating revenues versus expend- expenditures, um, and this is on one of the, the, of the pages, eighty-six, for full disclosure, um, you'll, you'll notice that in the last five years, the first three years, our expenditures were relatively the same, which were, we were keeping or hovering over thirty-four million dollars. We, we are now, uh, that jump from nineteen, nineteen-twenty to twenty-twenty-one was up four-point-six million dollars. And then again, in this proposed budget, we're doing another jump of close to, uh, three million dollars. Now, I know that the, the proposed budget has revenues, um, and I'm assuming that there's, um, there's positions that haven't been filled, but they're projected positions, so that therefore, obviously, that increases the, the expenditures. But you also have proposed, uh, sales tax revenue.
Yeah.
I, I, I think my, my only concern that I see here is that the, the, the percentage, uh, ratio from expenses to revenue is fairly, uh, is fairly close to that. You know, it's like ninety-seven percent versus previous years, you've kept it in the eighties. So what, what, what kind of mitigation would we have? I mean, is that where maybe we wouldn't fill those positions to, to accommodate the budget? I know two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollar surplus is, is good, but, uh, you know, I, I always think that we should be having a, 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 a better cushion, so to speak.
Yeah, so can, can let me attempt to answer that, Roger, and then maybe if you wanna elaborate on anything if I may speak. And so you're absolutely correct, Councilmember Rodriguez, that, and then on page eighty-six, um, there, there, there appear to be fairly significant increases. One thing about the twenty-twenty-twenty-one budget is that that's the budget number. Those aren't actuals because the budget year doesn't end until tomorrow. But in speaking with Roger, we're projecting that those expenditures are gonna be lower. And so Roger, can I ask you, so, so I'm correct in stating that, right, Roger?
Absolutely. Uh, we are expecting to, um, have a savings on the actual to budget on the, on the labor side, and, uh, also on the MNO, uh, as well. Yes, that, that's, that is correct.
Yeah, so, so for the current fiscal year, Councilmember Rodriguez, the green bar is gonna come in lower, that the thirty-eight-point-six million dollars. And for the current year, this is what we're proposing now, but a couple of things did change. One of them is we've added the new fire station, so the fire station is gonna obviously cause an increase. The other thing that I neglected to add is that the current budget, I, I indicated that we budgeted all of the, every filled position at a hundred percent. We did not take into account if anyone were to leave the organization, the time any salary savings. And as we all know, when you have larger organizations like ours, uh, people unfortunately are gonna leave the organization. And so oftentimes, we experience salary savings there. And the other thing is, one, one thing we've been attempting to do is, is narrow the gap or narrow the cushion between projected expenses and projected revenue. And so that's been done very strategically, but, but we've noticed, because, council may recall, a number of years ago, we had enormous swings at the tail end of it. And one of the things that we're attempting to do is we're trying to narrow that gap a little bit because we are operating on a relatively healthy unallocated fund balance. Of course, the more is always better, um, but, but, um, that's one of the reasons why we felt comfortable, uh, proposing to council this evening, allocating some of, some, some potential revenue to the parks department, for example. Historically, those funds would not have been allocated, and, and some of the expenses, or the proposed budget you're seeing, is we're adding a couple of items that maybe historically we would not done that on. For example, the housing element, adding a couple of new vehicles, uh, proposing fifty thousand dollars for Sunrise Millview, adding another fifty thousand for Towny Country. Those are things that maybe in the past we would not have done. And right now, we are proposing the twenty thousand for the beautification, and then the six new part-time positions for city beautification. So those are things that maybe in the past we wouldn't have done, but, but because we're comfortable with where we sit, we thought that it would be appropriate. So that's, that's, that's one of the reasons why the proposed budget probably seems a little bit higher than in the past.
Yeah, and so I think you answered, so you're saying that the twenty-twenty-one budget's increase was due mainly to the fire, uh, station?
Uh, the twenty-one, twenty-two, well, if, from twenty-twenty-twenty-one, yes. So the fire station opened in November, and, and so we started staffing that, so that's why you saw that bigger jump. And now this year, it's gonna be a slightly bigger jump because it's gonna be staffed for the entire year, not, 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 you know, uh, seven months out of the year yet. So that partially explains some of that.
Thank you. And this will be my last question. Uh, this is for you, Roger. And again, this is, uh, for purposes of maybe, uh, uh, you know, just educating myself and maybe, uh, some of the council. But what would be, uh, a, a very healthy percentage when you, uh, of an expense to, uh, revenue percentage when it comes to looking at a, at a budget like this, you know? At times, you know, I know we see graphs and it's great, but what, what would be a healthy, uh, expense to revenue percentage? And, and that question is not, I'm not trying to throw you a curveball or nothing, Roger. If you can answer it, that's fine. I, I only ask you because, you know, I think it's important for me, and maybe my council also to know that, you know, where, where does a city wanna be when, when we look at a budget like this? You know, what, what exactly do we wanna see? How much of the expenses do we, do we wanna see in comparison to the revenue? What, what is considered healthy? I, I know that two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollar surplus is great, but what, what would be a good, healthy, uh, ratio?
Yes, uh, th- those are great questions, and, uh, thank you, um, City Manager, really quick, excellent explanation on the, on the fire, that's part of the increase. Uh, one thing that is different, slightly different is that, uh, we noticed that when we do contract for services, there was a huge deviation or variance between budget and actuals. And so we asked the question, well, why is there a variance that is so high? One of the answers is, in, for example, in public law, public works is, what if something happens? What if a water line breaks? And so what we started to do is, we created an account called contingency, so that we don't, we try not to mix things. So we have a, a little bit of a, a, a bigger cushion per se than what is shown right now, but we call it contingency. Uh, that's one thing. Uh, now, to answer your question, um, one thing that I've noticed, uh, I worked in, uh, a city of Hillsborough in Oregon, which has, is the home of Intel, and it has a lot of, uh, up, you know, a very large budget for the population. And, uh, in the city of Madera, uh, as we haven't, we have analyzed the numbers, we noticed that the sales taxes, the property taxes, and, um, overall, uh, even utility bills are lower than the average in the, in the valley. And, uh, for that matter, for the st- for the state. And so the revenues are very tight. And we're, the city's already operating, uh, with limited resources, uh, as it is. And so I would say that, um, using the revenues is healthy, uh, close to, um, I mean, pretty close to a hundred percent because, uh, it's, 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 we're, we're trying to, to provide services to the city with, with such, uh, low, um, revenues per resident compared to other communities. Uh, and the reason I say that it's, it's okay is because the council, at some point in the past, adopted a, a, in, emergency reserve fund, and to me, if something turns bad, uh, those, those were the worst on terms of revenues collections, we can, uh, we will have time to make adjustments in the city and to make corrections. So hopefully, I, I answered some of that.
Oh, you did. Thank you, Roger. So for every dollar earned, you know, we, we wanna expend every dollar because we're working with limited resources, right? Pretty much.
Well, that's, that's part of the answer is, is very, very tight across the departments.
Thank you, Roger.
All righty, uh, I see Councilwoman Evans. You might wanna unmute yourself.
At least you didn't hear what I said, so thank you. Um, thank you all staff for the binder and, you know, presenting it to us and getting it to the house and all that. Mine was on the front porch, but anyway, thank you. Um, what I need to know, and, and I'm still a newbie, so please forgive me, but in this budget, okay, we, and I'm going to specifics. I wanna revisit the Snore sidewalk, and I know Keith is probably like, oh my God, here she goes with this again. But I wanna revisit that and ask, is there any way that this can be tabled for next year? And possibly the funds that are going to be used for that be used for the James Monroe, the, um, Lake Street, the Adele, that area there to see if possibly we can get a better street over there, um, get some more sidewalks across the street from James Monroe, even to the point of going to Ellis. Um, I was, when I went out for my visit at James Monroe, Um, I was, when I went out for my visit at James Monroe, the young people came to me and said in the sixth grade that they had written letters and had them placed in the silver mailbox in front of the school. And they asked me if we could get the letters on city council. Well, I was embarrassed because I hadn't heard of any letters. So that tells me that maybe the letters weren't there, I don't know where the letters went. But they were concerned because they walked school, cars splashing, their moms come in baby buggies. This type of problem is, is serious. And yes, I understand Snore is important, I do. I understand that, you know, this school may not be in the most elite area. But at the end of the day, if this was your wife or your child that was walking down the street and a car came by and splashed them, how would you feel if it was your mom? So all I'm asking is, is there any way that a, a Snore can be tabled to next year and we revisit James Monroe, Adele, Ellis and Lake? And possibly being able to do that? This is a hypothetical question, but it sure would be nice to receive an answer. And I don't know if this is something that could even be done, but if so, can we do this and then maybe make changes on our next meeting and vote on it then? Arnaldo, somebody, please.
Who do we direct the question to?
That'd probably be a Keith question, Mayor, if that's okay.
All right, Keith?
Okay.
Nice, nice, nice deflection, Arnaldo.
I'll go ahead and try to address it. Uh, the, yes, the projects are in the CIP, uh, the, the projects are done, uh, we, we attempt to direct those at the pleasure of, of the council. Uh, the Snore sidewalk was put in there several years ago, uh, as it relates to a, uh, CMAC grant, congestion management and air quality. Uh, that, that was, uh, I think that goes from River, excuse me, Sunset to, um, I'll just say, go ahead and say it goes about a mile to the south of that. Uh, that was put in there several years ago. Uh, more recently with the AHSC grant for the, uh, the housing facilities at Fifth and Sea, uh, we have additional sidewalks that are, uh, they had say branching out all over town. That go, some of the sidewalks go to the west and connect up with Snore. So to complete a, uh, try to go ahead and get people to various locations throughout town. Now, can we, can we table that? Uh, I, I, I will go ahead and try to go ahead and get more specifics on that. Generally speaking, that was the project that was approved, uh, by the Madera County Transportation Commission and other, um, and, and other entities that participate in that review. Can the fund be shifted? I suspect that they can. We can, I think, probably bring something back to council to go ahead and show the various sidewalk projects that are in queue so that, uh, so that council can consider them as a whole and, and, and make decisions on some of them. Go ahead and give you a, a greater, a bigger picture, look at, at what funds we have on the various different projects and where they can be shifted. Uh, all funds are subject to, uh, the discretion of the city council, uh, so we'll be happy to go ahead and, uh, bring that forth and, and do a review on it.
So the answer is yes?
Thank you very much.
I, I think the answer is yes, we can bring it to council and, uh, and, and review that.
All righty, thank you much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm with Tilda Hill, this is a, 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 probably a workshop in regards to the budget. I just want to make sure that, that discussion on, on, uh, capital projects is okay. I know I see it on the, uh, I see it on the part of the, uh, the binder that was delivered to us, but, um, I certainly would not be in favor of tabling it. I would bring it back for discussion to see if we can find an additional, uh, uh, funding, but certainly not, not tabling the Snore project. I think the, as Keith had mentioned, that was a project that was identified by the Madera County Transportation Commission and approved. So, um, I, I certainly would not approve into that if that's something that requires council discretion or council decision, then we can certainly bring that back at its future meeting, uh, but I, I wouldn't table it, um, if, if we don't have council's, uh, direction at this moment.
Right. Council, in response, in response to your question, uh, the only item for action tonight is the continuing resolution. However, it is a workshop, so there could be discussion and staff would listen to some of your points and, uh, bring back that, uh, some of that discussion at your next meeting prior to adoption, or staff may need more time and ask you to, uh, go ahead and approve the budget and bring back the, the, the subject matter at a later date. But for today, you can't take action.
Thank you. So, so when you say approve the budget, um, this is a, a adopt the resolution continuing?
Right, you're not adopting the budget tonight, you're just a continuing current budget, correct?
Gotcha, gotcha. So we, we've had discussion, I don't see any more hands. So, uh, do we have any public comment, Anita, uh, Alicia, sorry, I apologize?
No, Mayor, I, I don't have any public comment at this time.
Okay, okay. Then I will bring it back to, um, uh, council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, uh, approve the item before us, item A1.
Um, who's the second?
Councilmember Viegas.
All right, uh, motion to approve item A1 by, um, Councilmember Rodriguez, uh, second by Councilmember Viegas. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
And for the record, Councilmember Gaios is absent today. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Thank you for the report, Roger and, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, we will now move on to, um, item A2, memorandum of understanding with mid-management employee group. So would that be yourself, Wendy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So item A2, as the mayor just read, is the mid-management employee group, MOU. Uh, the MOU is very similar to those approved at your last meeting for the Police Officers' Association and Law Enforcement Mid-Management, but I'll walk through the proposed terms briefly. It is a four-year agreement beginning July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2025. The major components for salary include a 2% cost of living adjustment each July 2021 through 2024, a $1,500 lump sum payment to each employee each July 2021 to 2024. And then the health contribution will be set for the city's cap equal to the core plan, um, for Anthem or Kaiser, depending on which provider the individual selects. Uh, the city, uh, did agree to increase bereavement leave, um, from three days to five days for out-of-state, um, family members who pass. And then the final component is the holiday closure. Mid-management and general bargaining unit have had the holiday closure for a couple of years now. Um, the closure will continue for 2021 through 2024. And this is that, um, scheduled workdays that fall between Christmas and New Year's are days off with pay. So the cost of the agreement, financial impact in year one, the 2% COLA is, um, approximately $60,000 and the lump sum payment is approximately $51,000 for a total cost of $111,000 in the 21, 22 fiscal year. Subsequent years will depend on the employee count at that time, um, employee classifications, whether or not people have promoted, um, and, and what merit step they are at. The health benefits, we don't yet have a number on that. Today is actually the final day of enrollment, um, that we are, are trying to get everyone enrolled in their new plans. We had some big changes this year, as council recalls, um, but there are some estimated, uh, savings o, over what our renewal would have been had we not made the change. Um, and so we're, we're potentially looking at, um, an, an increase that's about 225 less than it would have been otherwise. And then finally, the holiday closure. The actual value depends on, uh, the days of the week that the holidays fall on, uh, because during the term of this agreement, the holidays actually start to fall over the weekend, which changes the workdays affected. Um, but for calculation purposes, assuming a four-day, uh, period of time, it's roughly valued at $47,000 each year for the mid-management group. Source of funds, the recurring cost of living adjustments will be accounted for in the city's annual operating budget, and they are included in the budget you began to review this evening. Um, the lump sum payment and the increase to the health insurance cap will be paid from the general fund unaside fund balance, regardless of the normal expensing department, meaning if they're a water employee, this portion of the payment, the lump sum and the increase to health will come from the general fund. And that was also built into your budget this evening. So the requested action is to approve the MOU, authorize the city manager to sign it, and then authorize the Director of Financial Service to make the designation and classify, um, the monies in the reserves for the one-time payments and increases in health over the term of the MOU. So that concludes the presentation, and I can answer any questions if council has them.
Thank you, Wendy. Looking for my colleagues. I don't see hands raised. I'm assuming everyone was wanting to approve. I would ask Alicia, do you have any public comment that, uh, anyone who would like to comment on from the public?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Then I will bring it back to my colleagues for, um, for action.
I move to approve item A2.
I second.
Motion to approve item A2 by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Evans. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Council, Councilmember Gaios is absent. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Oh, and for the record, Alicia, I am in favor of most of the items presented before us, just not in favor of a long-term agreement. Thank you.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Final vote is four yes votes, one no vote. Councilmember Gaios is absent, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Having, uh, no more items to discuss this, uh, tonight, thank you very much for attending our, our special city council meeting. We will now be adjourning, and the time is 7:22. Thank you very much all, and have a good night.